Having taught in Susanville School District for 20-plus years, before I began teaching in the public sector, I earned Social Security credits. Because of the windfall elimination provision, my Social Security benefit is reduced by 50%. Furthermore, under the government pension offset, I will be deprived of spousal survive benefits under Social Security. I am not alone. Many retired teachers and public workers are affected by the windfall elimination provision and government pension offset act. The Social Security Fairness Act of 2017, H.R. 1205, was introduced by a Republican representative, Davis of Illinois. To date, there are 114 bipartisan co-sponsors. Can I, along with many others, rely on your support for this bill?
Thank you for that. Now that, at a previous town hall that came up, I haven't seen Mr. Davis's bill. He's a friend of mine and a colleague, one I like to tease and kid us with a lot anyways. He's a friend who run that baseball team together and all that, so I will take a look at that bill closely when we get back. We hear the second in one of these town halls. We actually do get information out of the town halls. You know, that's why we have. So if you need some time, though, it will help. Do you take one of the cards?
I got her paper.
You got it now, okay. Put that topic, because then we can be sure to be reminded to review that and all the oral win and things on blue straps, okay? So thanks for bringing that up. That's something very likely you'd favorably ask, but I don't want to say today yes or no, because I haven't read it yet, so, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for coming here today. Do you think that our president, Mr. Trump, is morally reprehensible as an example for our country's youth, for our standing in the world, and if not, why not?
Well, you know, he's certainly a constitutional figure, and the voters, when they narrow down the two primaries to a Democrat and Republican, I think it's, I think who you elect is a reflection of your communities, okay? And so with basically two choices, the presidential election, this is the one that won. Now, is everything he's done in his past good? No, but this is what we have to work with. And so I will find the positive, as I did with the legislation we were able to pass into President Obama, bills he signed for me and others. You work with what you have. And so if you look at the, look at more on the results instead of the personalities or the tweets, you know, so many people say, well, if you just stop tweeting, it would help. You know, I mean, the people that voted for him, part of what they voted for was a guy who says it like it is. I've heard that so many times. So it is a productive for me to stand here and critique him on that stuff, but say, yeah, is there things in the past he's said and done? Of course, we know what those look like, but I guess maybe we all have things we'd like to do different or better and, you know, some of the stuff I did in high school was happened to them. But that all said, we're muddled through is what we have, and we're going to use the tools we have, the toolkit, to advance the policies to be best for all Americans and that sort of thing, okay?
Congressman Lamafa, thank you for coming. I have worked in healthcare most of my life, and I'm very concerned about the health insurance, as I have seen how lack of health insurance devastates families. You said if all were insured, pre-existing conditions wouldn't matter. That only counts if one stays in the same network. For example, my husband, who has a heart condition, was well insured, and then when they switched to a new provider, it took us out of that network and into a new one. And the new provider said, oh, you have a preconditioned condition. And so it was three years before he could have any coverage, and that was quite a while ago.
Let me interject right there. That's wrong, that's not the way it should be, because if you've been responsible, you know, again, it's a risk pool that you're in. You've done everything you're supposed to do. You didn't know if you were contracted condition or not. And then when you get on the other end and you need, you need to be able to collect on that insurance because it's something unfortunate's happened to you, the game should not change under your feet. And so portability is part of what we're trying to accomplish in these reforms. You should have portability to go directly forward with that. If you've lost your job, whatever the situation may be, there needs to be that bridge and transition that does not now throw you into this pre-existing condition pool, because you were not one, when you responsibly were paying for health insurance before anything by you was contracted. So I give you back your time.
I believe that single payer is the only way to avoid pre-existing conditions. It is time...
Let her finish, please. Let her finish.
It is time, after seven years of talk, to work together across party lines, in Congress, to consider what is best for all Americans and not what the lobbyists want. I approve the term Medicare for All, as 16 of your California colleagues in the House already have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I listened to your comments before, Mr. Lamafa. It seemed to me that you may have had a real Damascus moment on the road to Susanville. I was heartened to hear that you're now interested in finding coverage for people who would lack coverage by the ACA, because you voted 61 times in your service in the House to repeal the ACA with no backup plan whatsoever. This is a little too late, a little too late.
The statistic is a little skewed, because there hasn't been 61 votes while I've been there, and they weren't all to completely repeal the ACA. There are different aspects of alterations, but I give you your time.
Now, under Lamafa Care, which is the so-called healthcare plan you voted for in the House, tens of thousands of people...
You know, sir, you don't have to be personal about it. I'm not the purveyor of writing the legislation. I'm not even on the committee. I'm one of 435 House members. It's not crafting the bill, but taking your information. So if you'll do it in a positive spirit, at least it's easier for me to take that information.
It is positive, sir. You work for us, and in this district, we get from the federal government whatever we get from the federal government.
I work for many people that have a different opinion of you two, in you two, sir. So when they're not here today because they're afraid to be intimidated, they rock this crowd.
Under Lamafa Care, tens of thousands of district residents would lose health insurance coverage, and the cost of insurance for middle-income people over 50 in the district would be dramatically more expensive. It's remarkably unpopular across the country. Only about 29% of Americans support the bill that you voted for, and it is easily the most unpopular bill the Congress has considered in decades. More unpopular than the bank bill in 2009, more unpopular than Obamacare in 2010. Polling suggests there isn't a single state in the United States in which a majority of voters support Lamafa Care. The estimate for California is that 26% of voters support Lamafa Care and 54% oppose it. Given the chance to vote again, would you again vote for the ACHA, Lamafa Care, a bill that so clearly gets the will of the people? Or do you want your legacy to be that you went to Congress so you could give the wealthy a tax break by making the residents of your district sick?
Thanks for your comment. There's about four questions in there. Which one will we answer?
Would you vote for the ACHA again?
Yes, sir. As a continuing discussion until we can finally get to a bill that will get through both houses and can get a signature to the president that achieves cost reductions and more choices for middle-income families. That's what we're after in next place.
First of all, thanks for coming out, Congressman. I know we're kind of out of the way. My question is, on August or March 28th, you voted to, for measure to allow ISPs to purchase browser history. And according to Open Secrets, you took $5,000 campaign in 2016, took $5,000 from telecom industries. And so my question is, if I wrote you a check for $5,001, would you start standing up for your constituents as far as their privacy is concerned?
$5,002. $5,003.
You can stand there and insult me like that, okay? That's fine, this is part of the job. But what was actually done in that piece of legislation was to put it back as it was on privacy before there was a regulation made by an agency that hadn't, I have to recollect on this a little bit there, but it was on its surface a controversial-looking vote, but a recent, one of the two regulatory agencies that had never been highly involved with internet regulation was now asserting itself and making a parallel set of rules on internet regulation and privacy regulation over the agency that had been doing so. So in pulling that back, it was actually a correction to bring it to where one proper governing agency that was handling internet privacy would continue to do so, and we can get more actual information on this. It's complicated and hard for me to recollect the nuances of that, staying right here in front of this microphone. But it was a sensible vote at the time, had nothing to do with this campaign nonsense. I mean, $5,000 is nothing to make me change a vote over something and gallon my integrity over something like that. If they happen to support me on most of the other things I do in telecommunications, and they think I'm a guy that wants to get broadband into area like here, and they're for it, maybe they, maybe that's why they like having me in office, but I certainly would influence my vote on that. And so I hope you're recording that.
Thank you for coming. Please be more often to see us. You just represent us, you need to see us.
What we're doing here today, aren't we?
More often. Appreciate it.
Take a look at the professional calendar sometime, okay?
I'd like you to update your website. Your captcha requirement has stopped me from submitting three messages to you, somehow I have to come here and tell you.
Our, I want to know, our official website is...
Your website, you have to require, I'm not a robot, I have to do a captcha.
Right, right.
I've gone through that thing four times, and it is still coming up with more boxes to check. It's excessive, it's onerous, it's, so, it stops me.
And that's not my intention. I would like our website to work easier. The House of Representatives on a bipartisan basis designs this stuff. I would like to have a much more easier interaction as well. This is my real goal on that, and so I might have to change my password all the time to get into my own computer, remembering password to do one every six weeks, kind of, and miss everything else. So I get your frustration on that, and if you, if you put that down, please write that on one of the forums, and I would like to take that to the House Administration and say, these websites, when people bring it up, they're tied up pages, it's a pain in the rear end trying to get through to us. I want you to be able to do that honestly, okay?
Two or three comments. I would like Congress, I don't, no, I don't think Congress is doing its job. The healthcare reform financing is an example. Both parties have had eight years, both sides of the Congress, the House and the Senate, have had eight years to come up with something. And it hasn't, it hasn't, Congress hasn't. But when you pass possible legislation, I'd like you to focus on policy rather than programs. I've worked in aging programs by the feds, and I've worked in SNAP debt, and I've worked in healthcare. I started out in '78, I was last in 2012. The regulations are absurd now. There's, there is no independence, there's no, you can't do anything. There's, there's no need for me to do my job. Philip Howard's rule, nobody is a very good guy, like, he's got a lot of good suggestions. Second, focus on healthcare in addition to financing. We're getting lousy value for the bucks that we do pay for healthcare. There are no outcomes that will follow your care. It's towards paying for treatment. And finally, I'm a great user of the outdoors to protect my federal lands, keep them in the public sector. Thank you.
I'm really happy to hear that you're concerned about human trafficking, and I hope that's high on the list as number one. I'd also like to see broadband moved up higher on the list, because we're going to have businesses in our rural counties, we need broadband, and we needed yesterday, so please do everything you can to get this broadband happening. I see this, this discussion that we have, and we learn from you, and hopefully you can learn from us, and one of the things I keep hearing is about the insurance companies raising rates, and mainly that's because they're uncertain, and they, they are the ones that are saying that, that they're uncertain about this market, and they want to be able to rely on these federal subsidies, and so if we, if they could rely on those, you would have less expensive premiums. However, having said all that, if we want portable healthcare, and we want to focus on healthcare and not in health insurance, then obviously, single payer is portable, would help everybody that needs medical care. Now, I hear the compassion for the poor person that has to pay a tax on whether they do or don't want insurance, but I have to pay 60% of my taxes for the military budget, and I want you to have compassion for me, and, yes, no, I don't have the question. I just have comments, and I'm just going to keep on commenting until you throw me out of here. Housing in this district has grown more expensive. The Federal Department of Housing in urban development, affordable housing is, that housing should cost no more than 30% of household income in Beale County. The fair market rate for a two-bedroom is $9.23, and for a three-bedroom, $1,300. A family of four would need to make over $3,000 a month, and obviously, we know that's very hard to do in this type of county. So, so I'm going to wrap it up with, we would really support your helping us with affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It hasn't been my pattern to comment on every comment, but on the housing affordability, we need to make the housing more affordable itself, instead of trying to paper it with dollars, with tax dollars, in a high-cost situation. More forest products, more land that is reasonably priced to build homes on, instead of declaring everything's got an endangered species on land you could normally develop. You know, we're developing then, instead, in floodplains and agricultural land, instead of stuff like on the, on the foothills that would be appropriate. So if you want to have housing be affordable, then make housing affordable, not try and pay for overs of other people's money. Go ahead.
Hi, thanks for being here today. I have a question. As a retired family advocate, I've worked with...
I can hear you.
Sorry.
What's your name?
And my question is fairly general. What is the House of Representatives' plan to do about Social Security? We keep hearing it in the news that you're going to cut this, cut that, and this isn't really your money to be cutting. I paid into it, as I'm sure everybody else here has paid into it. Aside from that, I'm not sure if Trump or maybe Congressman do, I'm not sure about that. Oh, good, good to know that. Anyway, but my question is, what are your plans for Social Security? We keep hearing all these rumblings.
You gotta watch those rumblings, you know, there's a lot of misinformation out there on that. But nobody in Congress on either side wants to cut people's Social Security, all right? We have a system that by the year somewhere 2033 or so, is beginning, is going to be in big trouble. Now, the ones you want to get after are those that have borrowed from the Social Security trust fund in the past to pay for whatever, and that's, that's, that's wrong. I mean, if you have a private pension system, if people are borrowing out of, and with no intention of paying it back, that'd be criminal charges right there. So we've heard talk about lockbox and all this and that, but what happened, what needs to happen is that no more pilfering the Social Security fund, and that's not happening under my watch, but the people that pay into it, it's been borrowing previous years for, I don't know what I do, but we, there's an ad hoc committee that's looking at Social Security, and, because, yes, you paid into that. Anybody that has, is part of an occupation, you know, somewhere exempt, gets to pay to their own fund in different types of state or federal employment, but everybody else pretty much has had to pay into it and expects to get out what they paid into it, you know, with whatever growth the federal government is able to cause. Hope again, when it's borrowing trillions out of there, I don't know how you're seeing Federal government's borrowed over the years for whatever program that they have, need to put it into, whether it's fighting the war or other types of spending, because you need to put it back if you borrow it.
As a federal representative, then you could vote to put that money there?
Yeah, and again, this is what our ad hoc committee were working towards, how do we do it? Because we're at, you know, we have that lot, lot of debt there. The national budget each year is somewhere around $500 to $700 billion upside down. We're going to get that down to zero to make, make progress on the national debt, not even talking about the Social Security IOU file that we have, because it's around, it's around that, almost that $20 trillion number. And I've seen numbers lately that since January, that number has trickled down a little bit more accurately. So if we balance our own budget on a year-to-year basis, that number doesn't go up. And in the meantime, the people who paid into Social Security, which hasn't been tapped, and I'm aware of, over my time, almost five years in the House, it needs to stay in that fund, and it needs to be protected. But also, we have to look at the longer term, how will it sustain itself on what will be drawn out from the baby boom generation or the ones following that? How will that be sustained? Because if you have less people paid in, you know, merely because of a smaller population than what is drawing out, that's where the problems come in in the year 2033, '35, somewhere in there. And so we don't want people to be left in the lurch on that, and then have to become even more so a taxpayer problem, having to fill this back in. Now, we do need to make progress on what has been borrowed or stolen or what have you of the trust fund, and that means a strong economy is part of that, too, because we have to have the income to cover all these things that go on, the day-to-day operations of government, getting after the national debt, paying back the Social Security trust fund. We have a very difficult task waiting after all that, but one of the root, root places you start is a strong economy, bringing the jobs home, doing things in forestry that we can do in this county, doing things in manufacturing, doing things offshore. What are all the things that could possibly make a stronger economy, helps pay for all this? Because you can't just tax somebody to death and think you're going to get it, because the people that are most likely to be the subject of those taxes are the ones that can also be the most mobile and move it somewhere else. Long, long answer to that, but Social Security is, is on our minds, and when you see it happening, if you see proposals out there, listen to what we have to say before the, those in the media or the internet try and portray it as somebody trying to take or cut or eliminate Social Security. We will be trying to work through a solution that will sustain itself long-term. And, you know, we're talking about retirement age being raised, that's, that's one thing. It's less painful than some other things, you know, with long, better longevity for folks. So these are things we're looking at, and everything's on the table, and your ideas on that are welcome. We can get it through the Liney Line website, right? So write it down on a card, but thank, thank you for your comment.
Hello, thank you for coming. There are three recently, well, there's two recent reports that have come out just in August about climate. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to look at them. National Climate Assessment, this is a candidate that mandated from Congress, and there is 13 federal agencies that have weighed in on this, and they conclude that Americans are feeling the effects of climate change right now. This is all since the beginning of August, and you may not have had a chance to see it. They say evidence for changing climate abounds from top of the atmosphere to the depths of the ocean. They say thousands of studies conducted by tens of thousands of scientists have documented climate changes on land and in the air. Many lines of evidence demonstrate that human activities, especially emissions of greenhouse heat-trapping gases, are primarily in response, responsible for recent observable climate Yes, I want you to respond, but there was also a study that came out from NOAA with 60 countries, and this came out just since August also. So I'm hoping that what my question is, with new information like this, you've already made a response, I'm hoping you'll take this into consideration. This seems like is very important, and it is very extensive, so I'm hoping you will take this into consideration, and that's my question.
We have it taken into consideration, new information is submitted, okay? It has to be factual information. NOAA was caught manipulating temperature numbers in the city. And so if it takes credibility away when they, when they change, when they change numbers and make the hockey set there.
Please make sure that you check it out. This came from the New York Times. So it might be things that you look like you're automatically discrediting, so I hope you'll dig into this. We're all counting on you. Climate change is so important.
Thank you.
Mr. Lamafa, I would like to thank you for coming and giving me this opportunity to ask this question. These last two weeks have cast a spotlight on the hate and racism that forces in our nation. Members of the Unite the Right, KKK, neo-Nazis, and other white supremacists have stated that they are emboldened by our president. These groups have publicly vowed to use violence and force its fellow Americans to achieve their goals. Tens of thousands of Americans have taken to the streets to protest these groups and their anti-American rhetoric, which threatens violence against non-whites and various religious groups. Members of the military, all civil servants in city, county, district, state, and federal positions, jobs, are required to take an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against enemies both foreign and domestic. Many consider whites supremacist with their threat of violence to be domestic terrorists. Mr. Lamafa, Mr. Lamafa, is a fighter planning on the red. Mr. Lamafa, can you explain to us why this administration and many members of Congress, including yourself, has taken such a soft stand against these hate groups? Do you consider these hate groups to be domestic terrorists or not? Please answer the question, explain your answer, and tell us what you intend to do.
Of course, these are Venus hateful groups. No question. I don't know why there is even a question.
Are they domestic terrorists?
If there's anything in my background will give you positive things otherwise, it's my, you know, very public support for Israel and Jewish people, who are oftentimes the victims of, of this type of activity.
My question is not whether or not you think the tactics are wrong. My question is, what, do you think that they are domestic terrorists? That's my question.
If they're engaged in violence and harming people, yes, they are.
Then you take that stand very strongly.
I've always had a strong stand against people that would inflict violence and try and intimidate others, intimidate people from expressing themselves, free speech, whether we're talking on campus, or the ability to have a demonstration, a permitted parade. Everybody has that right to their First Amendment expression, for others to be trying to impair that, or impede that, or stop that, or use violence, or tear gas, or other objects to try and do that, and that is a form of terrorism.
Can you...
Go ahead, just give a little more.
I just wonder how come you're not willing to take any kind of stance that deals with the real issues that some of these groups are saying that they want to inflict violence.
The stand I've taken has been to give law enforcement more tools to not only protect themselves, but protect us with the violence that's seen on the street, especially since January, but through our, through our history here, where you go down to what has happened in Ferguson and Baltimore, where the officials stand back and say, well, we're just going to let them express themselves. That's irresponsible, because real people are being harmed physically, their businesses are, I mean, that's highly irresponsible. What we saw in Charlottesville, basically, the mayor allegedly telling the police chief of the police to stand down, and the governor of the state with his partner, National Guard telling them to stand down and say, let them have that, basically, that's highly irresponsible. Didn't mean to happen. Do we... Does anybody who's known the activities of the National Socialists? No. But is there a First Amendment right by them and everyone else to peacefully demonstrate whatever crazy they think it is, data or a T, or someone wants to do, then I guess if we respect the First Amendment and they do it peacefully, under the process the City has with a permit or whatever, then I guess they should be allowed to do that. But if it would have turned into a story, had people said, you know, well, let those National Socialists have their little party, if we ignore them, it's not going to become a story. Instead, now it's become a two-week-long hysterical thing, where people's basic integrity is being asked for not saying the right thing fast enough or big enough, or in the way that they want it to be said, to help them be satisfied for their political ends, so...
Can I make one comment? And that is, I think, I know you answered the question exactly the way I... And that is, I think, I know you answered the question exactly the way I thought you would.
Is that good?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Hope that was good.
Thank you for coming out again.
Hi there.
I just want everybody to know, if you can't hear me or don't know me, for everybody who's from out of town, I'm Joseph Turner, I'm a disabled combat veteran, I'm from Milford, I've lived in the last county most of my life, so that's why I wanted to know. I have a question and a couple, a couple quick comments. My one question is, has any of your colleagues considered the impact of certain areas of states enticing foreigners to make illegal entry to trespass on our country to intentionally be counted as part of the census to inflate congressional representative districts, as well as stealing electoral votes from other states? California should have less, four to seven less House seats and electoral seats by encouraging foreigners to come in here and be counted. That should be correct. We have our own government, there should be in our representation.
Joe, good to see you, and thank you for your service to us, and we hope you're doing well. Yeah, the question, I'll hopefully phrase that a little bit, is that basically, should the census count illegal immigrants in this country as citizens in the basis of how the census is taken and how the lines are apportioned, or where House districts are drawn, or the local legislative wants as well? And to me, it seems that that group does not count towards that residence. You even have that with prisons, okay? You have prisoners here that are counted towards the population locally, if I'm understanding correctly, but now you want urban areas where they came from, they want them to count where the residence was, or they came from LA or something like that. So if you got to put up with them here, I guess logically, they should be counted here in the census. But you're talking illegal immigrants, and a test case was done in Texas, if I'm not mistaken, through the courts to, and they may even legislate it, I'd have to check up on that a little more, but that it should not count. Illegal immigrants shouldn't count towards the census that would skew that, and then, because as you say, California was 3 million or more illegal immigrants in the state, probably does gain four or more House seats based on a population that isn't really a legitimate voting base. And so I think that is the correct way to look at it. Whether that can get through a court process, or be legislated nationally, or the state legislature can legislate it here in this state, but Texas tried on that, and I would have to refresh myself on whether the legislation or which way that court decision went, but I understand the topic you're talking about, and I think you're on a track, at least I agree with how much you think.
Congressman Lamalpa, first, I want to thank you for your support for the SRS legislation. It's really important to Latin County, our schools and roads to be.
And on that, so we certainly hope it does pass, thank you. I have one question. I'm a member of a community coalition, it's a by-state coalition with folks from Southern Worden and Northern California, and we've been working on an initiative since 2016 to pursue national park designation for lava beds, national monument. We've had a number of community meetings, tours of the park, as well as received lots of letters of endorsement for that proposal from individuals, businesses, as well as local elected officials. We have another round of community meetings that are coming up in Siskiyou County, Modaw County, and in Clamath County this fall, and discussions will continue on into 2018. And our hope is, Congressman Lamalpa, is that your office would be neutral as we pursue that proposal. I know there are some diverse interests, and we'll probably hear more of that this fall, and we want to work closely with the tribes in order to try and achieve some common grounding consensus. This proposal is good for the park, it would be good for the local communities that are pretty distressed economically. So my question would be, we've heard from the Siskiyou County supervisor, or at least one of them, that with your office, the proposal is dead in the water as of now, and that we shouldn't attempt to have any more community discussions to try and get to consensus. Our hope is that your office will support continuing discussions in order to achieve common ground, that you would be very actively involved in that, and I'm hoping that you'll agree that that's the approach to take.
Certainly, my office isn't wanting to suppress your discussions and meetings on that, but we haven't been convinced of...
Repair the tape, make the squeal.
We haven't understood what the designation change would gain, but I'm open to hear what you have to say on that, in changing it from a lot even to a park. What does it cost to do it? What are the benefits? And is there the, you know, you talked about the benefits on that, is there a solid basis to see that those benefits will occur by a name change? Or I think you're probably talking mostly tourism, increased tourism, and so what changes with the designation in a practical effect? You know, it's not my number one priority, one way or the other, on that to be adamantly opposed, or I think this is going to change the world. So I'd invite you to continue to send us information and have those meetings on that. I don't see the reason to carry a bill to do so at this time with everything else we can do. So, but I certainly don't suppress your ability to take your time and make the case and further. But what we really need is in-depth study on how really it would be an economic boost to go through the process of changing this, and not one that would add to bureaucracy, because what we are concerned about, it just gives the Park Service more bureaucracy to take over an additional area where it's really limited in its scope of what tourism is there if you, you know, visited that. I mean, imagine much fourth grade kids in the car going out to those lava beds on a summer day, thinking this is great, right? So it's going to take a pretty big sale to get a lot more tourism out there. And I don't, you know, it has its merits for a certain type of tourism and stuff, but for the big numbers, I might be being talked about, the designation would cost, and the gains, you know, you got to convince me a lot of it. But please keep doing that work, and we'll look at it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I'm a farmer's daughter. My family owns a farm that has been our name for 170 years, took 150 years to pay off the bank. My father never took any government handouts, even though they were offered. He was independent and proud. If corn prices were down, he grew oats. If oil was down, he grew corn. In Alaskan County, I understand accepting some government subsidies on low-flow irrigation, that helps us all, on fencing to keep those cattle in, that helps us all. I do not understand how someone who is, quote, "A leader in the fight against government entitlement programs between 1995 and 2012," took in with his family $250,000. That's a quarter of a million dollars. According to the Ag Magazine, on June 8th, 2016, Congress defeated to require greater disclosure of crop insurance subsidies. So we don't have up-to-date information on that. It's a comment. I think it's a conflict of interest to be on the Commodity Exchange Energy Credit Subcommittee of the Committee on Ag when it benefits you. I don't understand how you can vote against SNAP when it helps hungry kids, when one out of five kids in the U.S. goes hungry every day, when our representative can accept corporate welfare.
Okay.
One comment.
You had a comment, let me address it, okay?
She just was making a comment.
Okay.
One comment. I personally don't believe that I live in a democracy anymore. I think I live in an oligarchy, ruled by the rich who control.
Okay, well, during my time as a representative, I've had one farm bill come before me that I was able to vote upon, the SNAP program is part of it. All three different iterations of SNAP that came forward for vote, I supported. I supported continuing in all those iterations that came forward, so we got the final product in the third bill, okay? So there's no base cutting or eliminating or any of that stuff. Also, the first farm bill I was able to vote for as a U.S. Representative, we eliminated the direct payment program that you're complaining about, that goes to growers of the certain commodities that are in the Ag program, the farm bill program. Eliminated direct payments. Now we're all required to be in insurance system that we pay into to, again, address the eventual disasters that might happen on the crop, the crop failure, or the bottom end of the price, of the market price. That's what we're paying into. So me, I need to change all that, to get rid of that. I graduated college in 82, I walked into a situation where commodities of rice and many other things had gone through the floor, and the government created this program. I was one of tens of thousands of farmers that were like, "Okay, sink or swim. You enroll the program as it was, and you live with it." I never liked it as a person who's conservative, that talks about those things you kind of mentioned there, that supported food stamps but doesn't support continuing the farm bill as a handout for farmers. We want to be in a market-based situation. We want to level playing field amongst other countries that come in and undercut us and dump upon us with cheaper made and less regulated products. So I've taken those steps, so I can certainly see the hypocrisy of doing it otherwise. I don't want to be that, and I think my record will show that I've moved in the direction of weaning farmers from the farm bill in that aspect, and moving in a direction that's much more market-based and responsibility-based on determining their own self-insurance to help keep the bottom end from dropping out. So I think all those points you made there are refuted by my record, so thank you.
Okay, so we have like six or seven people, so we're going to have to go lightning round, otherwise we're going to leave people with no ability to comment.
I'll do a shorter answer.
Sir, currently, House Resolution 676, are you familiar with that?
It's hard to keep track by your number.
The Expanded and Improved Medicare for All Act. It sits in a subcommittee, I believe you're the chairman of the Indian Affairs Department of Native Affairs. Can we expect to see it coming out of your subcommittee anytime soon?
Okay, our subcommittee has a reason, but the votes are held by the whole committee, but 676 is what bill? I don't imagine...
The Expanded and Improved Medicare for All Act.
Medicare for all. It wouldn't be in my subcommittee. If it had something to do with Indian Affairs, or Alaska Native, you know, Native American Islander Affairs, it would be not in our committee. It would be probably over in the Energy and Commerce Committee, where health bills would be taking place. So unless I'm, you know, missing a bill number or something like that, please submit that to us if you wish, but I don't think we're talking the same apples here.
Okay, well, my Congress not gotten it, it shows.
Okay, well, we'll be happy to get back with you on clarifying that, and if indeed there's a position on that, we can clarify and we'll deal with it. Okay, give us a card on that bill, please.
The lightning round, oh, that figures, just like me. You know, today's the red flag warning day, we're supposed to have lightning strikes today. And I'm a fire lookout, and my wife's a fire lookout, she's on the fire lookout today, this is one of my days off. And I live in Burning, and I want two fire lookouts over there. I've been a forester for 51 years, and I've very much dialed in on it, and you know who I am, but you don't recognize me, probably. But I'm Fred Rhines, fearlessfred.com, fearlessfred.org, you can be doug.org, fearless doug. Because I went to the ready...
I'm up here, right?
That's fact, I went to the ready one, and they beat you up pretty bad for that. Oh, anyway, I've got a tool for you, tell me, we can get these forests thinned out so they don't burn up, and I want to show you how to use this after the meeting, and I'll show you how to give it to our president. And you can get him over here, and I'll get him in a forester's truck, and we can take you out and show you how to fireproof the forest. It's not rocket science, or Fred wouldn't have a figure.
I agree, probably not that tough. They have a pretty good idea of prescription to maintain the...
Not in the meeting, please. I have a comment, and if you want to respond to it, that's fine, but I'm not just making a question so that you won't feel obligated to answer it.
Fire away, sir.
I am very concerned about what is going on in the national media. Donald Trump claims that the liberals are all banging up against him in the media. Actually, the truth is that there is one Republican-oriented, ultra-conservative news organization that is buying up, let's see, it was 73% of all the local television stations in the United States.
What's the name of their organization?
Same here Broadcasting. And their policy, as I understand it, is to require their news people to carry pro-Trump news virtually exclusively, and with the 73% saturation there, that would be, that would be bad enough, but they're also spinning off stations to their friends so that they can stay within the 73% and still exceed that percentage of saturation, adding Fox News, and there's going to be virtually no TV stations in this country that aren't owned lock stock and barreled by Trump's propaganda machine.
I haven't heard that put that way before, but, you know, the free market who buys stations, now, the FCC is going to have say on how all the stations are spun off, or these acquisitions like that, and there's industry standards.
Rules for standing clear. They've already changed them once, and they're changing them again.
Well, it's supposed to be a free marketplace, a free exchange of ideas, and I'll watch what you're saying, I'll watch what they do, okay? And see what they, I wasn't aware that was talking on mine. Thank you, sir.
Congressman, you talked about the fact that you voted now to end rice subsidies, you'd like to see farmers support themselves in terms of their property, and so on, but you have, your family partnership has collected over $5 million in subsidies over the years, and you still get to sell water and rice and so on.
We don't sell rice.
You sell some water somewhere, I think.
We don't sell water.
You don't sell water, okay, then I'm correct. But you have collected a huge amount of subsidies. I guess you probably made more money off the government than anybody in this room, right? Between rice subsidies, crop insurance, government paychecks, for quite a few years now. So I'm thinking...
It's a percentage of income to our farm during low prices.
Yeah, right, okay, that's fine, but I think...
Well, if you want to make a charge on that, I should be able to...
I'm not charging, I just cite the facts, that you haven't taken rice subsidies. Okay, I tried, I tried.
The first chance I had, I got rid of them.
So college students take loans, but they have to pay them back. Why don't you pay back what you got when you hit your low point in subsidies? You're doing pretty well now, why don't you pay it back?
Hello, Jacob Hibbits, local college student, first town hall, I'll try to make it quick. So, so far, I'm trying, I'm really am. So where we stand in California right now is that 1 in 5 California community college students isn't just eating taco ramen for lunch or dinner, they're homeless. I'll repeat that, 1 in 5 California community college students are homeless. And if you look at the similar numbers of childhood poverty in just last county, it's hovered in the last few years between the average of 22% to 29% of families have a child who is either not getting enough food, or is not getting the care they need, or the family at least cannot afford that because they're in the poverty line. And if you look at the similarities between that, as well as California community college students, children, and the area, and as well as the drop in federal programs since the 80s, from around like 75% to under 50%, I just want to know what you're looking at as far as making sure that everybody has social mobility or upper mobility, not just families, but as well as college students.
That's a myriad of areas coming from the issue of mobility. That's a myriad of areas coming from the issue of mobility. Mobility, upper mobility does come from finishing your high school education and engaging in something that pleases you post-high school, if you choose. You know, whether that's vocational training, whether that's a two-year degree that's more geared towards a location or four-year, more work right away. What we need to do is address, why is the cost of college so much that we make it up, make up for it by loan debt that is, in some places, for some individuals displacing their abilities to buy a home, because the same amount of home debt is about equal to the amount of some student's college debt that they paid for for many, many years. And so that's a crushing blow. Why aren't we doing things to break, again, we're talking healthcare, what we do to address the cost of healthcare instead of just trying to pay for all of other people's money? And in this case, we're paying for it all with loans, which looks good at the time because you're all enthusiastic about getting that education to whatever level you are, two-year, four-year, vocational, what have you. But especially the four-year. We need to do things to address, why is college costing so much? Because I believe colleges have taken advantage of the ability for more loan dollars to be placed out there and not addressing what really, at the core, what it takes to run a university and offer classes and all the infrastructure of that. So that would be a very helpful, direct way to nip it at the root of the problem, why is the cost so high? Then you're not stuck with a big bill that either each job college you can choose to be, or what have you. Now as far as homeless college students, that's really a difficult one. Instead of providing, finding a way to be in a home, you're taking classes. That's a choice. Now explain that a little bit.
Sure, 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 absolutely. A lot of people who are growing up, whether they come from money or not, a lot of them end up relocating, or even there's people that come here from out of the country, and they end up with a certain amount of debt, and that's a whole other situation, but we're talking about California students. And the California students, some of them, in order to get out of livelihood poverty, they're moving into a situation where they're trying to go to college even if they're not going to receive family assistance. You can have an EFC expected family income of like $3,000, and so you don't receive anything from the school. And then they're left to pay all of that after school, even though they may not have a job. And so they're pushing, but I consider them heroes. That depends on how you see it. But they're moving forward into a college education to get themselves out of that situation, only to find themselves struggling through the whole process.
Well, the type of food assistance and housing assistance out there, that is out there available, I would hope would be what that student could access during that transition, especially if that student's going for some type of a two-year, you know, talking junior college, talking trade school, or vocational, that bridge could be met, and boom, you're out in the job market and no longer relying on that safety net. That's where that needs to work. And so if there's people not accessing the safety net, then they need to find how they do so. Because it's out there with food stamps, with certain types of housing availability, there's a lot of programs that are out there, they just need to find them. Okay? I got to move on to the next champion here. Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for trusting.
Hi, I'm Nora Soster, I'm a retired science teacher. So that 97% of scientists that you were talking about who believe that we have caused climate change, not caused it, sped it up, I agree with them because scientists tend to deal in statistics. I would like to know where you pay your healthcare, who pays for your healthcare?
Well, we're kind of in a system that is similar to other federal employees, and so me, my wife, my family, a big portion of my income goes into it, and it's matched to some percentages by the federal government as a federal employee.
Well, as a retired school teacher, I don't get any subsidy as a teacher. My district cannot afford really to subsidize us at all. So one-third of my income went to my health insurance. My niece is currently still teaching, another one of those science teachers, and she pays $1,600 a month for her health insurance, and she does not have a choice, the district takes it out. Another niece of mine pays $1,800. One pays 1,800, one 60. They cannot all debt, it's not their choice. So they come home with a paycheck of about $2,000 a month when it all is said and done. And they work their behinds off. In fact, I helped one of them read her lab results on Saturdays and Sundays. She's working seven days a week. She's a biology major, she worked hard. And I would like her to have the same opportunity that you do in boosting her healthcare subsidies. And I think the answer to all of it for every one of us is a single payer system. If we get a bigger pool, start graduating things down, and it's good for all of us. And I don't understand for the life of me why somebody wouldn't vote for something that's good for everybody. Yeah, take money out of the helpless people.
I have two comments to make, one about human trafficking that's going on. And I don't think many people are aware that this isn't just for the sex trade, this is also for human organs. And boys are just as profitable as girls are now, or adults. And this is going on mostly through South America. These people are being picked up and not necessarily going into the sex trade, they are now being bought and paid for by a black market. And then to the healthcare issue, we seem to be combining two different things. One is insurance, the other is a welfare program that pays for people's healthcare. One is paid for, and you pay insurance, you're paying for the product. The other is supposedly free, but nothing is free. And just this last year, Sacramento tried to pass a single payer system. And they were going to pay for it partly through a 15% increase in payroll tax. So how does that benefit anybody's insurance? When you're paying 15% more for your insurance, it doesn't change a thing. The only way a single payer works, and this is proved in other countries, is through rationing. And, secondly, competition, insurance, private insurance companies competing with each other will bring down the price, will give you choice, and it will not, and be able to afford it because you're only paying for what you want. If you don't want reproductive care, you don't have to pay for it.
Okay, I'm sorry, folks, we're over against the must stop, so can you do it in 15 seconds? 15, 15? Okay, bang, bang it out, I won't say anything.
Yeah, my lightning round, my life just keeps getting longer.
Well, we don't want to use the word lightning, but, you know, go ahead. Okay, a couple of things, I want to just thank you very much for being here. You know, we've never seen Feinstein, Boxer, Harris, they haven't been in... They've been in the... Eight seconds, seven to go. Okay. I think that we need to do maximum competition with insurance. I don't like single payers, and healthcare provided for over 40 years, and I know about single payers. Welfare care, level care for everyone is what the vets have now, and that hasn't worked out very well. Okay, thank you. We do need insurance across state lines, we work competitive, we don't stop any more... I agree. We gotta stay in the road here. Thank you so much, sir. I agree. I hear you.
Congressman, thank you. I'm a road river raft guide up in Southern Oregon, and that, one of the wild scenic rivers from 1968, the Charter River, it belongs and resources to everybody, just like our BLM and federal lands around here are everybody's lands, from the dairy farmer near Gaysburg, battlefield, and machinists who can look across the river and see the Statue of Liberty, it's all our land. HR 622, local land for law enforcement, does not make sense to tax our Alaskan County sheriffs to do resource protection and eliminate federal, BLM, and Forest Service law enforcement jobs. Doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Put that on the card, please.
Thank you, Congressman, for being here today. I just wanted to briefly bring to your attention the problem that we've got within the H2A program. I don't know if you're sure if you're familiar with it, but in the sheep industry, in the upcoming immigration bill, I've been told that they're going to be granting amnesty to these guys. The industry at this time, it costs a lot of money for us to bring these guys out.
horrendous. There's a bill by Chairman Bob Goodlatte called H2C, let us send you the information on it. Give your contact, and be specific on the card on that.
Thank you, Congressman. I was in the Navy for nine years, and I'm plant manager at biomass power plant at Glendale, California, Honey Lake Power. Well, I appreciate your support of biomass, and please let's spend more money on fire prevention, getting that wood out of the forest, the fire suppression.
What's going to happen to the Wild Horse and Burrell program? You're one of the most lucky congressmen that got about 5,000 of these animals in your area.
More than 5,000, I think.
Yes.
Yeah. That's a tough cookie there, because the wild horse issue is very, very emotional, but the BLM, and to the extent the Forest Service has it, are not upholding the law of what they're supposed to do with horse to acreage ratios. And so it's, we're looking for ideas to take care of this problem, because it's been very destructive to the landscape as well. So it's ongoing discussion. We need a solution that will not bring down a firestorm of emotion and anger. So, thank you. Thank you, sir. Everyone, we really appreciate your time today, and I appreciate the spirit of this town hall, someone that's been not gone as nicely as this, but we can learn, listen to each other, and the life is spirit. So thank you, to all of you here today.